The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the very own problems.
Please join for a moment of silence for our fallen servicemen and women. All right, we're going to begin this evening's meeting with quick resident comments. This is intended for anyone who came to the meeting has something quick they wanted to share with the Board of Trustees, but is unable to stay for the whole meeting. So if there's anyone in the room who has a quick resident comment, you can come up to the microphone. They're limited to a minute each.
This is Kathy O'Hara at Hilton Hall. I just want to say thank you to Charlie, to Larry, and to Mike. You all have set a great foundation, big shoes to fill. I really don't think the incoming candidates are going to, or the new trustees are going to be able to fill your shoes initially like the way you did two years ago. Your footprint is all over the village in terms of the good things that you've done, and everybody knows the roles that you've played in making this a better village for everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, quick comments in the room?
Paul Rothenboll, 216 Kensington Road, Garden City. I just want to reconfirm the same thing, that I'm very impressed with what the Board of Trustees has done. And when I first started coming to the meetings, I used to get insulted and be told to sit down, and now they've listened to my complaints. I think that's excellent. One thing I want to ask about a little bit is, I've been very impressed with the work that's taking place at Maryland Avenue. And I owe Bruce Chester a big thank you, and John Barone a big thank you. And my question is, we still have some things to change there. And are we making any progress in trying to get the real president to come down and take a little tour with us?
I had a conversation with Hector Garcia, who's the new president's, or interim president's right-in man. Brief conversation, and trying to get him to get a hold of the president so we could have a meeting. So, that's kind of where it is. We're going to keep pursuing that going forward.
Thank you.
Any other quick comments in the room? Any quick comments on Zoom? All right, we'll move on then to comments by department heads, beginning with Mr. Barone.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. DPW will be covering 10 items on the agenda this evening. I'd like to direct your attention on to item number seven, Public Works. Item number seven is a request to approve a change order in the amount of $31,537.86 to furnish and install a new transformer as part of the permanent building construction for emerging contaminated treatment at wells eight and 12. PSEG has required that a new transformer be installed, and this was not previously required during the design. Item number eight is a request to ratify the proposal submitted by H2M for an amount of $23,500 for additional construction observation required during the reconditioning of well number 15. This is additional inspection work that was required to ensure the contractor properly air-served, chemically-treated, and bailed out the well properly. Item number eight, so, excuse me, item number nine, is a request to engage H2M in the amount of $34,800 to conduct an emergency present condition evaluation of the underground storage tank at plant nine. This is for H2M to investigate and identify a leak inside the well nine ground storage tank. This proposal includes interior power washing to inspect the entire tank interior. Item number 10 is a request to accept a maintenance bond in the amount of $125,000 for the Garden City Senior Center flooring project. Village Council has reviewed the maintenance bond and approved to its form. Item number 11 is a request to approve a proposal submitted by LKMA in the amount of $15,200 to further investigate a supplemental drainage option to increase the storage capacity and level of protection on Meadow Street. Item number 12 is a request to approve a proposal submitted by Creighton Manning in the amount of $15,850 for the final design work required to construct the Cathedral Avenue Road Diet. This item was approved in the Traffic Commission prior to this meeting. Item number 13 is a request to approve a proposal submitted by Creighton Manning in the amount of $18,850 for the final design work required to construct the Cathedral Avenue Road Diet. This item was also approved at the Traffic Commission prior to this meeting. Item number 14 is a request to approve purchases from Rio Supply. Rio is the company that the village uses to purchase Neptune water meters. From time to time, certain meter parts are needed that are not on the bid. Rio is the only authorized supplier for Neptune on Long Island. A letter from Neptune has been received stating such. Item number 15 is a request to exercise the first-year renewal option to Hempstead Tire Service and Barnwell House of Tires for the items listed for each vendor under each bullet point. These contracts are used to purchase tires for village vehicles and are used on an as-needed basis. Item number 16, board authorization is requested to extend item two of the village cleaning services contract for the remainder of the contract term set to expire in September of this year. Item two is for cleaning services at the library. That's all the items I have on the agenda. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
DBW head Barone, item number 10, the senior center flooring. Did we get a refund for the work or some kind of credit? Maybe this has already been mentioned, but I just want to, for the floor, since it was not exactly constructed to our liking.
We did not receive a credit for this. I was pursuing the option of getting a credit from the contractor. We hired a third-party inspector, who is a certified laminate flooring inspector. His recommendation was that it appears the repairs have been completed. The concerns of buckling and tripping hazards would be best practice not to perform any further repairs, so we can determine if the floor has stabilized throughout this winter cycle and into the summer months, if the buckling returns. This would be an indication that there would be a need for further moisture mitigation. There are moisture issues in the building. Crawl space vents are missing, so that is related to the expansion and contraction of the floor.
Preferred Construction, are they a new contractor that's going to do the floor, or the initial one?
No, they are the initial contractor.
So, why the need for a bond? I mean, shouldn't they be, they did the repair, shouldn't they redo the whole floor?
The recommendation from our third-party inspector is to not perform any further repairs.
Okay, but shouldn't they redo the floor, since they didn't construct it correctly to begin with?
There appears to be other issues outside of the floor.
That affects it?
That are, right, affected the installation and the performance of the floor.
Trustee Chester, the maintenance bond protects us if the floor...
Oh, I understand that. I understand that, but I would think they would just redo the floor, you know, because it wasn't constructed correctly, unless there were some outside factors that caused that to happen.
If I could just interject, trustee Bruce, under what circumstances would we make claim under the performance bond? Maintenance bond, excuse me.
So, if, you know, I'm not a floor person, but if the floor doesn't perform properly, and that sounds like a strange thing, but the laminate floors, the laminate floor probably wasn't the right application for that, which was on us. Nonetheless, they, when they put it down, there were some fixes they had to make, and they did make those changes. We did call the expert in, and the floor is fine now. It might not still be the preferred floor, but it is functional, and it's not buckling. So, if it does, if we get through this summer season, when the moisture content would increase and it starts buckling, we would call them back in and fix it. I think if we had our others, we'd want to, the underfloor was a real problem originally. It was, that was repaired. The floor surface was a smaller part of the expense. If we bring back the maintenance bond, but if it's the wrong application, ultimately with the board, we might ask the board to let us put down a better floor.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's just, it was a choice we made, and it's, I don't think we expected the problems we had. And John here is identifying, from the third-party expert, that there are ventilation issues in the building, which we intend to, which might help the situation, so.
So, we're going to, they're going to redo the floor, then, the preferred contractor?
No, the floor, the floor that's there is the floor we have.
Okay.
If it acts up...
Okay.
Then, or it doesn't perform well, or buckles, then we call them back in to fix it. And, but I think we need to tend to the ventilation concerns, which may be aggravating the situation, and before, we probably should do that before the summer hits.
Yeah, there's also a major factor that's kind of out of our control, the outside grade, the slab is lower than the outside grade, so the grade of the outside landscape is pitched towards the building, which is very hard to correct, which creates moisture problems.
We can't grade down, away?
No.
Okay.
When does the 18 months run?
Yes, from the, from tonight, the moment you accept it.
We'll be talking about this on short future meetings. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Thank you.
And then, I'm sorry, just one quick thing. Mr. Blake's folks are over there all the time, correct? So, I'm sure you hear about what's going on.
There were issues up until the last set of repairs, but when Preferred came in, along with the third-party expert, the floor was put down correctly, and it is now down and not buckling. There are no expanded areas. The floor is now performing as it should. As Mr. Barone indicated, the problem with the building is apparently when it was constructed, there should have been some ventilation put in underneath the crawl space, and it was never added in. And the moisture comes through the crawl space into the living area, if you will, and that contributed to the expanding of the wood floor. But right now, the floor is good, and we don't anticipate any problems with it. If they do crop up, as noted, we have the maintenance bond, and Preferred will be called back in.
Okay, and so, one more thing for the trustees and for the residents. That building was the model for the area that you live, trustee Ferner, and even though it was a solid structure, it didn't have that tweaking that would be necessary for a permanent structure. But it was donated generously, and we moved it, and that's a very small detail to be corrected. I'll see what we can do about the drainage or pitching or the grading area, if we can do anything about that.
Our floors are in good shape, thank God.
Mr. Barone, does it actually have a crawl space underneath the floor?
Yes, sir.
So theoretically, in order to put in ventilation, it could either be done by popping holes or putting a fan in there that would force the air circulation. The first idea of popping holes, I, you know, is one thing, but in order to have a level of forced air, all you need to do is have a fan on one end and going out from the other end. That would then be able to be humidity-controlled on a thermostat. So, at some point in time, the board may seek for a request for ventilation.
Will do.
Thank you, sir.
Just one thing to clarify. Number 13, that is the Stewart Avenue Road Diet? I think you may have said Cathedral. Just want to confirm. 12 is Cathedral, 13 is the Stewart Avenue Road Diet final design? Is that correct?
To apologize, yes, that is correct.
Okay, great.
I just want, very quick one. Mr. Barone, if you can just look at number eight, and you mentioned elevated levels of iron. Is that just a one-off there?
So, I believe Mr. Carey is on the line, and he would be more than happy to answer your question.
Thank you.
Good evening, board and trustees. Am I coming through okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, is the question I heard was a one-off? I'm not sure I understand the question.
Meaning, is that an occurrence that it just happened as a result of some event, or is there other concern about iron in the water more broadly?
That, that location for wells 15 and 16 at Hilton Park have historically had high iron levels. We do have an iron removal treatment plant there that gets it down to acceptable levels. This particular well, 15, has been higher than normal, so that's why we had to treat it with air sparging and environmental-friendly chemical, and that's, that's the need for the additional services by H2M. However, I should mention also that iron is not a, what they call a primary drinking water standard. It's called a secondary standard, because it doesn't pose any adverse health effects. It's only regulated for aesthetic reasons. But nonetheless, none of that water with the high iron ever reaches the system. At this point, we're just blowing it off, trying to get the levels down.
Thank you, Mr. Carey.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barone. Ms. Wu?
Good evening. The Finance Department has no items on the agenda tonight, but I would like to remind everyone that the next and final budget work session will be held next Thursday, March 28th, at 7:30 PM. And I also would like to thank the outgoing trustees, trustee Kelly, Deputy Mayor Marciano, and trustee Sullivan for their service to the village as trustees, and especially a thank you to trustee Sullivan, who also served as the Finance and Audit Committee chairperson. My staff and myself enjoyed working with you this past year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wu. Mr. Givinelli?
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. The Build Department doesn't have anything on the formal agenda this evening, but I just want to do, give the board an update on the Edgemea Firehouse. After this prior meeting, a few weeks ago, we, we met on-site, as far as the architect and the structural engineer walked through the building, hashed out some questions and some resolved some issues, as far as what there were some unknowns, discussed also with the fire chief's additional needs. And there was also a question brought up by the architect, as far as providing a site survey, an alternate for a site survey. Mr. Barone and I took that back to the office and discussed it, and decided that we can possibly handle this in-house. The village does own Total Station, which is site survey equipment. So, we set up the two engineers to do a full topographical survey of Edgemea Firehouse, and we were able to give that over to the designers, so they can implement the foundation plans survey and locate the building on the proper site. So, just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, that we did save about $5,000 to $6,000 by doing that. That survey took about a day in the field and a day and a half in the office. So, I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Barone and his crew for doing that, because that is a core savings to the village. So, thanks for that. And that's all I have this evening. If the board has any questions regarding to the Build Department, I'd be more than happy to answer. Before I end, I would like to also echo Irene and thank the Board of Trustees that are leaving us, and thanks for everything, and it was a pleasure working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, DBW head Barone, for that site survey. That certainly saved us some money, and any timetable at all? Givinelli on?
Still waiting. We did have a few comments and updates, so we're waiting. The drawings we saw were about 60%. So, they said that we needed a few more weeks to have that updated set for us to review and move from there. So, putting some pressure on them, but it is taking a little time. But it was a little slow process because of the change in design professionals. So, we're trying to pick up some time now, but hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll see some updated plans.
And once you get that updated plans, what do you foresee after that?
I'm going to forward that to the all parties, and hopefully, we can come together on a final plan, and then, once that, the final plan is established with the specifications, we'll put that set out to bid and get some pricing for the construction.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Givinelli. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Great.
That's better. Okay, three's the charm, I guess. Recreation has three items on the agenda this evening, starting with item number five, which is a request to, authorizations requested to apply for a Crest grant in the amount of $153,000 to be purchased, to be used for the purchase of a new bus for the Recreation Department. This grant is being offered to the village from the Office of State Senator Kevin Thomas. Number six, authorization is requested to declare Friday, April 26th, as Arbor Day in Garden City. This proclamation also serves as one of the requirements for the village to be named Tree City by the Arbor Day Foundation. And finally, number 17, renewal of bid. We have three bids for various types of vegetation, annuals, perennials, and bulbs, and we would like to renew the bid with Emma's Garden Growers, Pinewood Perennial Gardens, and Site One Landscaping. Purchasing typically puts in several extensions of bid when we go out, and this one worked out really well, because, as you know, prices are going up, but because the vendors don't have to go through the expense of putting together a whole nother bid package, they're willing to hold their prices at last year's levels. So, we come out pretty much ahead on this one, which is always a good thing. I will be happy to answer any questions you might have, but I would also like to extend my thanks to trustees Kelly, Marciano, and Sullivan. Over the past year, I had the opportunity to work with all three of them, and I found it both productive and enjoyable. We probably had one more laugh than we should have, but it was a great time, and I thank you all for stepping up to serve the village.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't, I do not have anything on the agenda, but I would like to go over the February stats for the Police Department. The Department had 1,886 service calls, 59 case investigations, 15 arrests, 10 impounds, vehicle impounds. We responded to 129 medical service calls, 80 auto accident calls, and we also issued 1,060 moving traffic tickets and 2,106 parking tickets. I also want to thank my detectives in my Patrol Division for some outstanding arrests over the last couple of weeks, with the warmer weather, it started picking up a little bit, and my officers were up to the task, and I really thank them for everything they did. I also want to thank the outgoing trustees, Deputy Mayor Marciano, trustees Kelly and Sullivan, especially Deputy Mayor Marciano. We had a good year working with the Police Department. I appreciate everything you did for us, and thank you very much. And trustee Kelly, thank you for everything you did with the Traffic Commission. We made a lot of improvements in the roads to safeguard the residents, so thank you very much.
One, one comment. You know that my family has unfortunately had to use your services. Your police have been absolutely the pinnacle of professionalism, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the help you guys provided myself and my family, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will advise them.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Chief Ferner?
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. The Fire Department has nothing on the formal agenda. However, I would like to bring something to the public's attention. The Fire Department will be partnering with New York State again to partake in a recruitment drive on Saturday, April 13th, at 10:00 AM at Fire Headquarters. We are inviting all residents to come down and experience the Firehouse firsthand. That's usually when we conduct our apparatus and equipment checks. So, that will be from 10:00 AM to 12:30 PM, Saturday, April 13th, at Fire Headquarters here attached to Village Hall. Everyone is more than welcome to come down. Other than that, I also would like to congratulate and wish the best to the outgoing trustees. The last couple of years serving with you has been an incredible experience, and we thank you all for your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you. Mr. Fishburg?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have an item on the agenda, number two, on the consent calendar. If you remember, a couple of weeks ago, the village conducted a hearing with regard to the condemnation of two parcels on Meadow Street, which basically are the extension of College Place. The next step in this process is to declare a negative declaration with regard to the project being the condemnation project. The Public Works Department has prepared what's called a short-form environmental assessment form. This is done because the, the action is declared to be a, or is viewed as being a, it's not a, it's not, not a type one or type two action. It's an unlisted action. We can prepare what's called a short-form environmental assessment form, which has been done, and based on that, the village is able to make a negative declaration, meaning that there'll be no significant adverse environmental impact as a result of this condemnation I too would like to give my best wishes to the outgoing trustees. It was a pleasure to, to work with you all, and I guess I also would give a shout-out to the new trustees, who will be coming on board, and hope that they can fill the shoes of the outgoing trustees, except for Mr. Torino, who, who's in the same shoes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fishburg. Mr. Swazi?
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, residents. Mayor, I have three items. The first one is number three on the agenda, the ADP Optimization Services Agreement. The resolution itself says everything. We basically want to bring them in to segregate the HR and payroll functions, as recommended by the two independent auditors, and supported by the Finance Audit Committee. We also want to eliminate any features that aren't automated or any paper processes, and we also want to update any, do any optimization we can. And finally, the time and attendance module is being replaced by workforce managers, so that will, we will integrate that into the system, and of course, any training that's necessary. That's at a price of $18,750. I would like to modify this resolution to just say at the end, subject to approval by Village Council, if we can make that change. Item number two for me is item number four on the agenda, that's the village horticulturist salary. So, this item, we hired a horticulturist recently, I don't know the exact month, but recently, at a salary of $82,866, and that was the budgeted amount that Mr. Paul Blake put in the budget last year, and the board approved. However, we couldn't hire someone within the 10-step grades of the CBA contract, and Village Council had approved the hiring above, as per the language, but from an audit perspective, there's nothing tying that budget amount to the job, because the salary doesn't appear in CBA, which we corrected in future negotiations. So, this really just is the missing link in the paperwork chain. So, if an audit does appear, we won't get dinged on it. There's, it's just a paper update. And the final item is, I too want to congratulate and thank trustees Kelly, Marciano, and Sullivan. It really was a pleasure working with all of you. Your dedication was outstanding. Trustee Sullivan, I am so happy that we got the budget for the capital projects under $10 million. I have to call trustee Deegan as well to let him know. And we started, we started well over $27 million. Unfortunately, in a week, we're probably back to $24 million, so. And trustee Kelly, the work you did on the Traffic Commission was outstanding, and I want to apologize for going AWOL as soon as John took his position, but it was fun working with you as well, sir.
The AWOL was noticed.
He asked me about it a few times. Do you come in anymore? That's all I have, Mayor. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
All right, thank you. So, I just wanted to, oh, actually, yep, we're up to Mayor Trustee Combs. So, we had an election, as everyone's aware. Congratulations to the new candidates, some of whom are in the room. I did want to take a moment to thank, as everyone else has, the three outgoing trustees, Charlie Kelly, Larry Marciano, and Mike Sullivan. I have watched you work incredibly hard over the past year and two years, always to protect our village and serve the residents. our village and serve the residents. The list is long of what we've accomplished with you on the team. We have an Airbnb law on the books that we didn't have before this year. We have a law on the books on abandoned homes in response to residents' concerns about homes on their blocks. We have designated parkland, not been done before. We have a head of the Water Department. We have an arborist on staff, and we have a completely transformed village approach to traffic. Our village is safer, and it's better, because the three of you and your impact will be felt for generations in the future, and thank you from the bottom of my heart.
I have some comments as well. Trustee Sullivan, your work, having those St. Paul's meetings and having the Bond Council come in, our finance people, as well as Westerman, was very well put together and gave some kind of sanity to the process. As chairman of the Finance Committee, I would say you did 80% of the work, and thank God you were the chairman of the Finance Committee and helped us all along. You did a great job with that. You're a very bright and humble man, and it was a pleasure to work with you and have you on that. Trustee Marciano, or Deputy Mayor Marciano, I enjoyed working with you, for sure. You were on a number of committees, Police Liaison, Library Liaison, on the Traffic Committee. Did I forget anything? I didn't. You did great work on all of those, and you were a joy to work with. Whenever we had to get ahold of you and get some information, you were excellent. Trustee Kelly, we go back to the summer of 2020, when those 100-foot poles were put up, and we had meetings in the backyard, Jim Kumble's backyard, and as the Estates POA ignored us, we decided to form We Vamp, Resident Voters Against Monster Polls, and you were very vocal, and your legal information on that was excellent. Your work on the Traffic Committee was unprecedented. After years of back and forth and really no progress on it, on the traffic issues in our village, with traffic devices that we needed, and even work on Clinton Road, which I know was not easy, you did it well, and you conducted those meetings very professionally. So I thank you for that. I doubt your work will be duplicated. Frankly, I doubt any of your work will be duplicated. Thank you very much. It was a pleasure to work with you.
Right, any other trustee comments?
There's just one. I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor. I don't want to belabor the point of the outstanding work the three gentlemen have done, but it's important to talk about the time commitment and the sacrifices that we knowingly, and I think for the most part quite happily, have taken on. And so, having served here for one year, you go in with your eyes wide open, having sat in the audience and talked to trustees, your friends and your residents, and having some idea of what the job entails. But there's a lot of work behind the scenes. There's a lot of work to do canvassing on different issues across the village. So I think it is that particular aspect of this job that I know folks appreciate, and I've heard it in my short time here. But add another year, and the sacrifices you make at home and with your family, these are all family men as well. So for that, thank you.
All right, so we will move on to approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the March 7th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting Minutes?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve those minutes?
Second.
All in favor? Minutes are approved. Is there a motion to approve the March 7th, 2024 Assessment -- Board of Assessment Review Meeting Minutes?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those are approved. Do we have citizen comments on agenda items? One of you can come to the --
Steve Alardi, Meadow Street, on item 11. I looked at some of the background material. There's this work discussed about down by Grove and Meadow. Can you just give a little background on that? Or?
Correct. We are looking to investigate a supplemental design that will increase storage capacity by utilizing a pump and pumping it down to a bigger area at the dead-end of Grove Street.
That's in lieu of the area or in addition?
No, supplemental to addition.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Andrew Dmitri Schumelder. Dmitri, that's Russian Ukraine, okay? So American tax dollars are being utilized to destroy Russia and Ukraine, okay? I question anything introduced by Paul Blake. I'm responding to agenda items four, five, and six. Library property. This morning, today, there's a giant mower, giant mower, mowing library property. The grass is like a putting green, like a putting green. That's how low the grass is. Under the direction of Paul Blake, a giant mower is mowing --
Mr. Schumelder, what agenda item are you referring to? Because I don't see it.
Well, okay. Four, five, and six.
Neither one of those have anything to do with library or mowing.
I know, I know, I know. But it has to do with Mr. Paul Blake introducing --
But he's not on the agenda. So if you --
Sir, yeah, I'll take over here. If you'd just limit it to the agenda item and let us know the number. It's not an individual. It has to be about one of the items.
All right. Okay. I defer.
All right, thanks. Any other comments, citizen comments on agenda items?
Kathleen Orol for Maryland Avenue. I'd like to make a comment on number five and number 10. It's nice to see that the bus is going to come in reality. For many of us who have ridden on that bus, it will be quite a lovely trip from now on. Referring to number 10 about the flooring, the floor is fine now, but when I've walked during the summer, because it's air-conditioned and I don't want to walk outside, you get the buckles. Now, I understand from -- sorry about that. I understand from the discussion it has to do with ventilation or lack of ventilation, but I think the true -- well, I think we have to wait for the summer and the humidity to see if the ripple effect comes back to the flooring. And once it does, I think then that ventilation has to be fixed, because this is silly. It's great during the winter when the cold months are there, and many times the building is very comfortable, and you can walk, and you don't have to worry about where you're walking, but we'll wait for the humidity to act upon it. So I know you are very well aware of that. And then something other comment was made about, let's see, hitching up the soil, grading. As a homeowner, I know enough that the soil near your house has to be higher so that the drainage runs that way, so might be a temporary solution for some of the problems at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments in the room, citizen comments on agenda items? Any comments on Zoom on the agenda items? All right, there being no comments. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar with the addition of item three, full of point two, order authorization is requested to approve the ADP Professional Optimization Services Agreement, making that subject to approval by council?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. That's unanimous. Do we have any citizen comments now in the room on non-agenda items? I think he's -- sure, sure. Name and address.
Matthew Flanagan, Harvard Street, Garden City. And thank you for preapproving my time to speak. First, I want to congratulate the newly-elected trustees who are here tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you so much for serving. Yeah, I think they were here last night, too, I understand, so they are, you know, looking forward to working hard, and I think that bodes well for the next two years. I also have to thank the outgoing trustees, and few have seen, as closely as I have, how hard they have worked and what they have done. And I've seen it on a Friday night with the promenades, when the kids started showing up, and we were out to dinner. Keep it together, Mayor. We were out to dinner, and there's trustee Marciano, who had to leave his wife, Alicia, and come because the police, you know, were getting involved there. So I -- and trustee Kelly, we were over at Raymond Court Parking Lot one rainy morning. You and Marge, and me and Mary, and Larry, who was on vacation, was zeroed in, so we were looking to find a way to get people safely to that parking lot in the back. I mean, the amount of time, and trustee Finer, and you had referred to this, the amount of time that these folks put in, it's just incredible, and the commitment, and all for nothing, other than the love of the village. And it's -- I'm so impressed by the way you men have stood up. And Mike, you know, when we had the St. Paul's meetings, which were contentious, we had you, and there was no one better to deliver information accurately and competently, and with, you know, your calm demeanor. I thought brought a lot to that. And you're always committed to the village, and the traffic, my goodness. I mean, trustee Kelly with the traffic, and tonight, they're here until 7:30 with this meeting. They're here for an hour before this meeting for the Traffic Commission, and that just shows the commitment. And really, I think the traffic approach has been revolutionized. So thank you all. You were fighting for the good of the village until the very end. You're fighting for the good of the village. You're fighting to get accurate information to residents. That's what you guys stand for, and if that's what you go down fighting for, you've done very well, and your family should be proud. Now, speaking of the families, and I want to speak on behalf of a group that has not been heard much from, the -- I'm sorry, I'm running out of time. The neglected spouses of village trustees.
Speak for yourself.
Marge Kelly. Marge Kelly, Alicia Marciano, Jen Sullivan, you know, thank you to them as well, because it is truly a family commitment, and you guys will see this, your families are going to see this, too. It is truly a family commitment, and it truly shows a family's love of the village and a family's appreciation for the village, and you three men should be so proud. Thank you.
Patricia Chester, 220 Kensington. To continue on that note, I know that personally, the time commitment you guys have put in, but more importantly, what you don't understand is the time commitment that our mayor puts in. Not only does each of these men serve on committees, but Mary makes sure that she attends every single committee meeting, and she's probably working on the village every single night of the week, and she deserves our appreciation and congratulations.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and trustees. John Wilton, Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the Executive Board and the Board of Directors of the Chamber, we recognize volunteerism, and for the trustees that are going on to other things, we recognize the commitment you made, the sacrifices you made. We understand, and we truly appreciate it. The -- we had a ribbon-cutting at J. McLaughlin. There's a new lease being signed at 953 Franklin Avenue, which will be a Thai restaurant. The application Giuseppe has not been started yet. Noema, the sprinkler system that we all have been waiting for, has just started. Hopefully, that will take a few more months, and it's been 21 months. Hopefully, they'll get it done, I think, in about three months. We've been focusing on the Easter car parade, so again, this gives us recognition statewide. We get people from different states, as well as Nassau, Suffolk, Westchester, New Jersey, Connecticut, Massachusetts, and as far away as Ohio. 647 Franklin Avenue, the white building by the railroad track next to Coast potentially may have a sale in the hopper. We'll see where it develops. And the promenades are now becoming a necessity as to what we're going to do with them, because we're getting too many phone calls as to all the things and all the operational things and the mechanical things that need to be done to make it happen. So again, your volunteerism, I appreciate it. I know my board appreciates it, and what everybody said here is true. People don't realize the sacrifice you have to make. I salute you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, again. I'd like to go on record that I'm very generous and forgiving, okay? I'm only asking $100 million, no, not $100 million, $100, half a million, from the village in restitution and reparation from what was done to me at the mishandling of a complaint by the Garden City Police Department, okay? The mishandling of a complaint by the Garden City Police Department. I went through a year and five months of hell, hell, based on nothing. Criminal complaint, be misdemeanor, be misdemeanor, okay? Ten judges presided over my case. I went through five defense attorneys. In a year and five months, not a single word of my defense was introduced to the judge or the district attorney, because that's how the system works, okay? Mayor, over the last two years, I sent you about 10 items in the mail. First-class envelopes, forever stamps, okay? You said you didn't receive any of them. Question number one, did you instruct Garden City Police Commissioner Kenneth O. Jackson to intercept these mail items from me to you, which are the envelopes were personal and confidential, adressee-only? Did you instruct Police Commissioner Jackson to intercept these letters? Yes or no?
So I will let you know, I know you came to the last meeting. I hadn't seen them. They have all been --
Excuse me, excuse me. The question is, did you instruct?
Excuse me, sir, let her answer.
No, no, she's not answering. She's not answering. Did you instruct Commissioner Jackson to intercept these letters? Because he intercepted these letters. Did you instruct him to intercept these letters? Yes or no?
Okay, sir, the village opens my mail for me and often scans and sends it to me, which is what was done in this case. So I do now have your letters all in scanned form.
Okay, okay. A question to Commissioner Jackson. I requested a foyer so that -- because I was in jail for two months in Looney Bin, because I refused to take a psych exam. I was remanded to jail, spent two months in jail, okay? A lot of my letters -- A lot of my letters that were from jail, I don't have a copy of those. I have the letters that I sent to Mr. Swazi to hopefully provide for the mayor and the board to review, okay? But I don't have my handwritten letters. Am I going to get a response to my foyer request from Mr. Jackson, please?
We'll follow up on that and let you know. I don't have that. I don't know if you have anything now or...
It was over a week ago I requested a foyer, over a week, because...
Okay, we'll get back to you on it.
All right. The crimes that I allege against Mr. Jackson, Police Commissioner, are, okay? Obstruction of justice, criminal conspiracy, cover-up, tampering with evidence, and stealing mail, okay? Understand, for a year and five months, it was a life and death, even though it was just a B misdemeanor, you have to understand how the system works. You have to understand how the system works. I've been through the system, okay? It was a B misdemeanor, but for me, it was life or death, every single day, okay? Did you review any of my letters?
Yes.
Okay, so you understand. I had an order of protection for a person against me, for a person, I don't even know who he is, okay? Understand that, okay? I was at risk of being a, what do you call it, a sex offender, okay? A sex offender. Because I refused to take the psych exam, I was almost charged with criminal contempt, which is a felony, which that would have set me upstate for a year at least, okay? Understand that. And had I taken the psych exam, given, Mr. Swazi, given, I would have failed, I would have gone to a mental hospital where I would remain for at least three months at a cost of $100,000 per month with the taxpayers, and I would have been forced to take psychotropic drugs. Did you get the side effects, my letter on the side effects of all those drugs? Did you receive that?
I did.
So you understand how scary it was for me for an entire year and five months? The nonsense that I went through because the police department mishandled a complaint, okay? I wasn't even accused, I wasn't even told what I was accused of. I wasn't even told what I was accused of, okay? I was just arrested. I didn't have a chance to respond to anything. Don't anybody watch Cops?
Okay. Your four minutes is up, sir, so...
Okay. Half a million dollars. That's what I'm asking. I mean, you can get, put him on suspension for a year and get rid of this...
Any other question or any other comments in the room on non-agenda items? Any comments? Oh, we want to back...
Hi, folks. Jennifer Sullivan, 40 Dartmouth Street. Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to say thank you to the board and the trustees for everything you've worked on this last year together. As we've heard many folks say today, your collective accomplishments, the list is long and significant and will have a lasting impact on our community. To the incoming trustees, I congratulate you. Benny Indian are friends. I'm not personally friends with the other trustees. You have exceptionally big shoes to fill. Trustee Kelly, trustee Marciano, and trustee Sullivan's collective intellect, experience, commitment, and can-do attitude that got so much done this year is going to be hard to match. But you'll bring your own good ideas, of course, and energy, and that will help Garden City continue to be the best it can be. I feel I would be remiss if I didn't comment on the fact that this week's election got ugly, very ugly. And I chalk that up to how passionate everybody is about this village. Everyone thinks they can do a better job than the next guy, and that's great. That's exactly how we're going to encourage each other to do better. But there was a lot of rhetoric about taking the village back, about bringing back a sense of community, as though that had ever been lost, and it had not. That is a false narrative, a very dangerous false narrative, that I sincerely hope is behind us now. Very sincerely hope it's behind us now. There is no monopoly on civility. There is no one person or party that loves this town more than anyone else. And that includes the three trustees who are leaving. I deeply appreciate everything you've done. I sincerely congratulate, pardon me, the incoming trustees. I know that you're going to do great work together. My husband and I support you. And let's move forward together in a much better way than we have so far.
Thank you. Any other comments in the room on non-agenda items? Any comments on Zoom on non-agenda items? There being none, do we have a motion to...
There's not two hands up?
No, those are mute.
I have a comment. It's on. These deputy mayors think they always know better. It's on. First, I categorically reject Mr. Flanagan's characterization of my wife as a neglected I wasn't happy with Deputy Mayor Chester referring to trustee Sullivan as very bright and then making no reference to my intellectual agility. I thought that was an indirect implicit cheap shot, and it was noted. I would like to thank DPW Superintendent Peroni and Commissioner Jackson for all their assistance on traffic issues. It made it a very productive process, and I appreciated the education I received from them. I would like to thank FabGC for nominating me and the residents for electing me once. I would like to thank Mary Carter Flanagan for all her support and guidance. And I would like to thank trustee Torino and trustee Fineran for their assistance on the Law Committee. And obviously, I'd like to thank Deputy Mayor Marciano and trustee Sullivan for all their assistance on traffic and trustee Fineran as well. And as for the neglected spouse, to use that ridiculous characterization of, I don't know what goes on in his home, and I'm not about to guess, but I certainly have some insight after his comments here, what goes on there and how he feels about how it's going. I can't respond to that, Mr. Flanagan, but I can tell you there's no neglected spouse at my home. And Marge will be happy to know that this elective office interlude is over and I do not have to answer every traffic email that comes in within 24 hours anymore. And I do not have to solve all the great problems of Clinton Road. And I leave them to the incoming trustees, who I congratulate on their election. And I wish them the best and I wish the village the best. And apparently, I should wish Matt and Mary the best.
All right, is there a... Yep, yes.
Easily be very bright.
I'm not as eloquent as trustee...
I won't miss those jabs.
But I want to thank the board, you know, for all the hard work that they put in, particularly Mayor Flanagan, trustee Kelly, trustee Marciano, trustee Chester, you know, countless hours, trustee Fineran, and trustee Torino. It is, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the village, and I really enjoyed it. And working with Mr. Swazi and village staff, you guys do a tremendous job, and it's really appreciated. I just want to congratulate the newly-elected trustees and wish them well. And thank you. Thank you.
So I don't want to be the last one, but I am, I guess. To the board, it's been a pleasure. It's been fun, it's been hard. I think we spend a lot of time doing a lot of different things. To the village leadership, to the senior staff, there's nothing quite like seeing what goes on behind the curtain, because to the rest of the village, I think it just kind of runs like a pretty little, like a little top. It does not. There's a lot of arms, lots of legs, lots of volunteerism, particularly from the fire department. To Matt, I hope that, you know, the visits you guys have made through my house, unwanted by me, but it showed a level of professionalism by you and your team, right? And you allow the village to sleep all night, and we appreciate that tremendously. To the incoming trustees, congratulations. It is a lot more work than you think about coming in just to prepare it. But, you know, my only hope is that, you know, we leave this place a little better than we found it. So thank you very much.
Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.